Ready?
Yep.
Okay. And guess first of all, who needs?
You have a copy.
Mark, you needed a set?
Is this?
I have Whitney's, but I could use a new one if you have enough.
Different from what was circulated?
No, no, just if you got.
Didn't bring yours.
Oh, I brought mine.
I think Mark needs a complete set. If you didn't get a complete set. Uh, Diane, did you see yourself?
I got it unburied.
No problem? Anybody else?
I'm good. So what is that, that?
That's her copy.
Oh, that's her copy.
Which was on the loan.
This, alright, okay.
Talk to the board. Want to give out a draft?
It's the first draft. It's best change.
Okay, no, because it keeps me awake. Depends on whose perspective you're going from here. All right, let's watch our time here. We wanted to watch your time. So in front of you, you have your book, okay? And within this book, it's the same as before. You have your budget calendar. There's some things like the tax levy limit, which is in your package that you have. You put in there, the rollover budget should be in there, and then places for the first, second, and third drafts.
Where's the tax levy limit?
It should be in the package. It's all we have.
What?
You have it.
No, I have a tab.
It's not in there.
You have it in this packet.
Right there. Right there. So.
So I don't have it.
When you get a chance, you can look through it. It's got BOSI's operation and maintenance, transportation. So there's a lot of backup information in there, and there should be more. But what I want to concentrate first is on the first draft. I'm going to start from the expenditure side, and then we'll get the revenue side. So I'm just going to try to hit the highlights as we go through this, because I know this is the first draft, but we have a different process this year, the rollover budget, and which is in there. And I don't remember what that even looked like, to tell you the truth. It was so long ago that was presented to the finance committee. And then instead of having the first draft, the first meeting in January, we did the first meeting in February, like most school districts do, but then we got snowed out. So we're here for our first time to look at it. And we're starting from a lot different place than we were in years past. So we'll go through this. Now, one thing I do want you to remember, when it comes to our salaries in here, just to let you know, Danni is two years' worth of increases. RTA is three years' worth of increases. Remember, there was no negotiated contract at the end of last budget season. So in some cases, you're seeing two years' worth of increases, in some cases, three years of increases. And when it comes to the administrators, you're seeing no increase, because they don't have a contract for this year or next year. So I just want to put that in kind of perspective, so that that's where you're going to see some big percentages, is in the salary. It's because they're multi-year increases. But you'll find in the employee benefits, it going down. So because that's where we're. That's where the salaries for those raises were located in those budget. So let's just get on to this one, and I'll just go through some highlights here. Just to let you know, I've gone through this a few times. And over the past couple of weeks, I found one area in which I didn't have something in budget, and it's right on the first page. And I'm going to have to add $2,000 to under the Board of Education for the superintendent's evaluation software. I had not budgeted for that.
So that's not even listed in there?
No, it's not in there, so that will be added for the next subsequent draft.
Okay, got it.
The next draft. That's the only thing as I go through that I've left out.
Okay.
But just on the first page, just to let you know, like I said before, a lot of these salary increases are multi-year increases, not single-year increases. So if you see anything in particular, and you have a question, let me know. So going over to the second page now, and about two-thirds of the way through, we have BOSI services. Under BOSI's administration, we see a negative $30,000. All right? And that's been created by this year, as you see that we had a very high budget. And that was for the purchase of our new accounting software. So next year, we've now brought it down to the maintenance level, so that one-year expense is done and over with. So we're able to take 30,000 out of there. And it may go down a little bit more, as we get a little bit firmer. Down under auditing, the last two, external audit fee and internal audit fee. And last year at this time, we were doing an RFP for our external auditor, and we had new bids come in. And for next year, it's 87, $18,700. And so what I did, that savings, I took out of the external audit, and I put it into the internal audit to give us the ability of the audit committee to expand the use of, or our ability to audit certain areas. As we go over onto the next page, there's, on page three, there's nothing of really any significance as far as that's concerned. It's, you know, a couple hundred dollars here or there. On page four, this is operation and maintenance, and there are a couple somewhat significant changes. And I may take something out of here. Once again, this is a two-year increase. Remember the step. One thing with the custodians, oh, I would say three-quarters of them hit their longevity this year. So that's why you're seeing a little bit more than average. I put additional $20,000 into overtime. I'm not sure if I'm going to need it or not. And I thought we'd be needing to use it for during the project, having to use our custodians more to be able to move classrooms as needed. I think the section that we're worried about, and that's like the window walls over there, is it going to happen until next summer?
Until summer of 2020?
Twenty, yes. Right. So looking towards the end of this budget season. So I don't think I'm going to need that money now, but probably will need it for the following year. We go two-thirds of the way down, under BOSI services. I was able to reduce it by 12,800. And that was our internet bandwidth has come down in price.
Okay.
Which is nice. So that was very unexpected. So it was a nice $12,000 savings there. If we go on to page number five, up at the very top, and you'll see this a couple of times, the energy performance contract. It's an EPC. It's a 17-year program, and it's done with. So this was for our boilers. So they're no longer on contract. So we took the $56,000 out of there, but we added back in on the line below, about $40,000. And that's what Sheldon believes he will need to address the boiler and any type of repairs that are needed. And just to let you know upfront, this may get a little bit more expenses as we go along. As the boiler starts to age, more maintenance will need to be done with it. But right now, he feels very comfortable with the boilers and their, how they're functioning. He's having a problem with the hot water heater, but that will get addressed. And then down at the very bottom, like everything in between is not humongous at all, and it's very typical. But the very bottom, special items, and that's our insurance. We were able to reduce it. Our experience has been very good, and actually, we will see a decrease. So that is nice to hear. If we go over onto page number six, and this is the start of, I don't know how many. Well, we've been paying BOSI's three years, but if we take a look down here, about a third of the way through, you see administrative charges to BOSI's. And that's our typical one. But right below it, you see BOSI's capital expenses. We owe 10,000, or $10240 for the first year of the three-year plan to pay them. So we, Christine, who's been helping me with this, we've, we met with Jason, who works for Bernie Donigan's office. I know we can reduce this number. We didn't know about it until after we set the first draft done. So this number can come down, probably by about 30,000. We're still trying to figure out, we owe them the 10,000, or 100,000. Then next year, we owe 500,000. The year after, we basically owe 400,000. So it's about a million dollars over the three years. But the mechanism to expense it over 15 years, that's still yet to be determined, because we have a couple auditors looking at this, and we're getting differing opinions about how this is handled. And I liked when we met with Jason, because the way Jason presented it, that's the way everybody should be doing it. You're going to pay them at $100,000 next year, but we're only going to expense about 60. And so we're going to have a deduct here, because we're looking at the 15-year plan, not the three-year plan, which is what we owe them, but we don't believe that's how it needs to be accounted for. So there's a little bit of opinion differences. So I can see this number going down a little bit. But we have to set it up as to how we deal with the borrowing, the payments to BOSI's, and how we handle that debt service. Because when we talked to one auditor, he was actually basically expensing it 100, the 500, the 400, but then we had the 15 years of other payments. So I says, we're hitting ourselves twice. And there's no way, we would have accepted if a million dollars taken out of our budget over the next first three years of it for tax debt purposes. So, but it looks better. That number's going to be coming down. You'll have an exact figure next time. So there's definitely at least about 30,000 there that can be taken. So that's one good thing. And as we look down through the rest of it here, Marvin added an extra $15,000 for curriculum writing. So that was, so he's increased his budget from 60,000 to 75,000. He also does have his grants too. So this is not his only source for professional development. The rest of it, just at the very bottom there is.
Tom, before you go on, adding 15,000 to curriculum development, is there a particular curriculum project that Marvin has on the horizon that he's working on?
I don't know particularly. I think he's thinking about the new standards that are, yeah.
At the science standards or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. And if you see at the very bottom, that's where our principals are, and you'll see there's 0%. Their raises are budgeted for in health insurance. If we go over to the next page, I just want to talk something real, real briefly. I'm not going to get into it, but you'll see you have your first three lines of clerical, and then you got clerical substitute. You see high school, chancellor, and the middle school. All through the instructional portion of this budget, I have to break it down by building. That's the new law with ESA and New York Transparency. I don't have to do that for operation and maintenance, or the business office, or anything of that nature, but anything in the 2,000 series, which is instruction, needs to be broken down by building. You can start to see, you'll start to see some more codes as they get added on. But that's the last I want to say about it, as we say that. But as you go through here, there's really nothing really of any significance on this page that really jumps out, other than Marvin did put an extra $5,000 for consultant in there. Did you ask specifically for what it is? Now, I don't get to that level of detail with this, so. But I'm sure he'll be able to answer those questions at our work session. Getting to page eight, I just want to show a couple things. It's not really humongous, but we've got to remember, we've already had our retirements for the year. So a lot of that is already, I want to say baked into it, but that's not the right word for it. But those things have already been calculated. But basically, you're looking at the elementary K6 level, about a 5% increase. And at the secondary level, about 2.35%, which is, which is really, is really good. And as you go down, you see where we're breaking it apart, as far as that's concerned. And then from here on, from equipment down through the next couple of pages, these are the requests that have come from the principals. Does anything really stand out? I mean, yes, there's some increases through here. There's a couple decreases, but nothing is really significant until we get over to page number 10. I just want to give you a couple little highlights. Not that they're humongous things, but they're looking to do a new purchase of science books. So in relation to what the new standards are, there's this almost $13,000 increase to science textbooks. When we look at the next section for textbooks for CLS, you see a kind of significant increase. And overall, it's only like 4,500 to 5,000. But in particular, it's the big ideas math. The consumables. The consumables are a bit more expensive than what they do everyday math before that.
So you're talking about like workbooks, things that they use, and then can't be used again by another student?
Correct, correct. They hope to be able to purchase a couple of years of consumables upfront this year, but they just have enough money to buy the textbooks themselves. So, but, so kind of figured this is where it is, and this is where it's going to level out for chancellor. Textbooks and BMS docked down a little bit. And if we go on to the next page, not a huge, really huge, huge increases. I think areas in which both of the schools were looking to do is add money back into their general supplies. And I think each of their schools have, to some degree, added supplies back to them, because they've all complained over the year, and they've been scrambling to move monies around to get supplies for their various programs. So they did, you know, increase their supplies, you know, throughout the budget there. But if we go on to the next page, is where we see a pretty significant decrease. And this is the area of programs for students with disabilities. And this is where we had a number of teachers retire from. And as we see, we have the budget going down by over $100,000 in, for teachers in special education. But also, you can see here, having to break it down, building by building, where before it used to be one code. Right below it, you'll see salaries clerical. We moved two people out, one person out of there, sorry. We had a person in there in special ed, but reality, it was a health person. So we just moved it to health. We re-coded it to health. And you'll see health go up. If we go about halfway down, you'll see the biggest line, which is a little over a million doll, a little over, 1.14, $5 million, and that's tuition for our special ed students. This number is in flux, okay? And maybe is a bit conservative, just because I like to go from the top and go back. But Ms. Davidson is currently going through her CSE meetings. This one really addresses the high-cost ones, meaning those who are placed outside of the district at Anderson School, or the various different schools around here, abilities first. There's a, there's more than a couple people who are in flux, meaning they're moving from out-of-state placements to in-state placements. And so it's a good thing, bringing them back in and things of that nature.
But these are students who are in, who are part of the district now? These are not students who are, who may be coming into that district?
No, this is strictly who we currently have here.
Okay.
In between the tuition other and the next, not the next, the section below that, BOSI's, which is 420,000, between these two codes, I have three unanticipated placements. Now, these placements are only like 45,000. So one person could come in and wipe that all out. But, you know, we average on three, we usually don't get three coming in. It's just, you just never know from year to year. Sometimes they move out, but more than likely, they're moving in. That seems to be a way it's been lately.
Tom, on that, can you just explain where the AIS would go? Has that changed, and where English language would go? Is that part of?
Okay, AIS is for the secondary. This is for the middle school and the high school. AIS is in 2110s. So if you went back to page number. Page eight, page eight. This is your teacher's salary. So your reading and math AIS people are going to be in the 2110s. Now, where we do have AIS, so all our AIS people are in 2110. But where you have a little difference, and I'm speaking with my colleagues across the county, and they said, don't move it. And that is, we have special ed teachers at the elementary level who push into classrooms, who aren't strictly sitting there and just working with special ed children. They're working with all children. It may take, you know, 20% of their day and work with the special ed students in that classroom, but the other part of the day, they're spending with the entire classroom, either giving academic support, or just there to help out. You know, so a person could be split, you know, 30% special ed, 70% general ed. But my colleagues have said, no, keep them that way. That's the way we all do it. Don't try to get too fancy on us. And I've taken it to heart, and working with Christine, we've kind of taken it to heart that there's, you know, that we don't have to break it up and put it all over the place. That really try to keep it where it is, but break it down by building. Don't try to go too wild with this, because you're just going to, you're just going to start pulling your hair out.
So those, those types of teachers are in the 2110s or?
Yes, yes, they're in 2110. And I mean, that's where those people who are hired strictly as AIS teachers, and we got reading AIS, math AIS, at all levels, at all three buildings, they're in 2110. It's the extra help that the elementary gets from their special ed staff is what's still kept in 2250. They're not going to be in 2110. So part of the CLS teachers are working with AIS, but not to the same degree that you would have sitting down as individual person. She's, I think, more of a generalist there in the classroom to help everybody out, and especially the kids specifically. But they're not sitting there, and the kids are coming in that way. That we have people to do that. So they're more of a classroom helper, to help in the classroom while learning is going on, and not after the fact, going to them separately, like you would an AIS person.
Well, I mean, the bottom line is AIS services are not special education services.
They're not, they're not, they're not. They're definitely not.
They may provide it to special ed students.
Yeah, that's, that's different, yes. Okay. So in those two areas, in the tuition and BOSI services, that's still an area in flux. And probably every, you know, for every draft, we'll see those numbers changing a little bit. Maybe not so much BOSI's, but the tuition other, yes. We go on to the next page, occupational ed. That's up a little bit. We don't have full numbers yet, so those numbers could be coming down. And I don't know when I'll have to talk with Dr. D. as to when the students who are currently sophomores and juniors are making up their mind for OCHED. So I had it at next year's level, or last year's level?
This year's.
Well, this year's level, you're right, this year's level. But we did add one student who was in a special OCHED program, Columbia County. So that got added to it. Other school, library and audiovisual, nothing, nothing big about it, except moving them and doing building by building. No real significant increases here.
Tom, can I just ask you?
Yes.
Can I ask you about one item?
Yeah.
For library and audiovisual, teacher salaries RHS?
Yep.
So what is, what is that 63300 entry for?
Okay. Well, from now on, we've got to think about it. Now, with ESA and New York Transparency, we have this library right here. It's a high school, middle school. In the past, it was just coded to, actually, I think it was just, it was coded to middle school. I don't know why, but it's just, that's the way it's been set up. But now, we need to break it down and say, I got two people in here. I have the librarian and the library clerk. They're split. There are seven grade levels in this building, four sevens to the high school, three sevens to the middle school. That's just how it is. So, so that's why you're going to see a lot of these things throughout it, like the social workers. They're just coded to the high school. Well, now I got to break it down between both buildings.
So it's not that the amount has changed, it's just the way that you're allocating?
That's correct. So what you need to do is you need to look right below. It's where you have those three lines. Then right below, you see, okay, there's a $9,800 increase, 5.68%. That's the number you should be looking at when you see those type of anomalies, like no increase, 7.8%, negative 57%. Look at the grand total for that section.
Okay.
It'll be a lot easier to understand what's going on. Or if something comes up, ask me.
Okay.
That's what I'm here for. No, actually, the first one was with the librarian. The second section was with the library clerk.
Okay.
Like I say, nothing really significant on that page. We turn it over, computer-assisted instruction, modest increases, mostly in the BOSI's area, plus some contractual issues with additional equipment, and some maintenance agreements. Attendance, really just increase to the salary, a little bit to supplies. Guidance, this is for each of them now. There is 20 days for the summer in these numbers, just so that you know. So there's 20 days of summer work in here. Where it goes from there, I just wanted to put it at that level, where it may go from that.
Is that for high school and middle?
Both of them, both schools. And that's for both counselors at the high school and the counselor at the middle school. If we go on to, at the bottom there with the guidance, and then we switch it over to the next page, it's really, it really just really increases the salary overall. When we look at the next area, so health services, we see a somewhat significant increase there of 67,500. We have two people added to this area that came out of other areas. One was in the special education area, who is our interpreter for hearing impaired, and the other one is a health aide. They haven't yet classified in 2110, but really, she is here and only here for health purposes.
So it's recoding?
It's recoding, right. Recoding. We're not adding anybody to this, in this whole budget, okay? There's one less teacher at the elementary level. That's the only thing that's been taken out, nothing has been added to it. So no new positions are in here. One position has been taken out of the budget, and that's through declining enrollment at the elementary level. Three incoming classes of kindergarten, four outgoing fourth grade classes. Got one more year of that next year, and then they'll be at three across the board. Reduce the health services. We have fewer kids who are out at private placements, so I'm reducing the health services to other school districts by 5,000. We go over to the next page. There's really nothing of significance, other than I need to break down the social workers and co-curriculars by building. That just has to be done. The numbers won't change. It's just got to get broken down by the buildings. We go over to the next page, Mr. Lassiter Athletics.
Sorry, Tom, on the psychological and social work services, we have been additionally over, under-budgeting and running through that budget line.
Not psychology. I'll tell you which one.
Just the social worker.
Social worker. And the reason is the following, and just to give you a little background. Social workers came in here, oh, jeez, 10 years ago? Started, yeah, it's about 10 years ago. And it was a contracted service at one point. And then because of turnover all the time, we said, let's hire our own. And that's, that's how we got them in here. But we had an offset, because the people we contracted with, which was Dutchess County, Dutchess Community College, or not Dutchess County, Office of whatever, but it was Dutchess County, we had a grant for them. We had monies coming in, a grant that I think was Marvin's shot. And so instead of using that money for the county, we did it to offset these salaries here. So in other words, the salaries for the, this is the only group of people in this entire budget that are not 100% in the general fund. They're about 70% in the general fund, and 30% to a federal fund. So what happens at the beginning of the year, we encumber their entire salary. It's not until we get their grants. When we get the grants, saying, okay, your social workers are now approved, and then we charge them out of the federal grants. workers are now approved, and then we charge them out of the federal grants. And then it goes into the black. So it stays in the red for a couple of months, and I think it's right about now we got word and hopefully payroll clerk has now gotten that switched, so the February one will reflect it being in the black and not in the red anymore. But that, that's one thing, the social worker, there's enough money to.
Well, we haven't developed the revenue side of this.
Right, yeah. And well, it, it comes out of the special ed side, so it doesn't even hit that, hit that. It's one of those weird things. We go on to the next page, inter-scholastic athletics. I put some additional money in there for a couple of things on the expense, other expenses, fees, additional fifteen thousand dollars. I was glad that when Steve said tonight that most was only going to go up a few thousand dollars, because earlier it was supposed to be quite a bit more, so I anticipated that, so we'll be able to scale that back a little bit. The BOSI services increased by five thousand, that's family ID, part of it, and then of course it's the increase for referees. District transportation, nothing really significant at all. If we go over on the next page, we're looking at about a one percent increase overall.
Tom, did you come out of age of field trips for the course? There's two ones, two one paper for.
What, what, I can't hear you.
Field, field trips on the, on the transportation.
Oh, I see.
So the.
You're looking at field trips, music, choral?
Yes, and then.
First line.
Yep. And the third one, so what is that?
Dr. D. requested field trip monies for those two programs, because they had none this year. So what they had done this year is they just did four thousand dollars for the entire school. And that he dealt with there. He is now coming back and wants to add in. He wants to return the monies that were cut out of, out of current year budget. Yeah, correct. Restoring it back to where it was. Whether it stays there or not, that's yet to be determined, but his thing, he wants to restore himself back and give the opportunities for the kids to go to the city and do those type of things that were, were taken out of, out of his budget this past year. If we go on to the next page, like I say, it's about a one percent increase overall to the overall program.
Which program?
The decrease, there's a lot on the handicap side, which is really nice. The handicap, we're traveling to fewer places now, which was able to cut back on a couple, two bus runs actually, in the handicap area. So that's really where a lot of savings. Overall, I was expecting three percent, but we're able to reduce to special ed runs. So that was able to, to then net it out to about a one percent increase. Transportation for BOSIs is going up, it's just, you know, we found it more economical to go through BOSIs in some instances instead of us hiring our own bus to do, because that way other districts can absorb some of that cost to us. Civics activities, nothing changes, employee benefits. You can go see quite a few decreases, you see the employee retirement system going down. The rates remain flat. Remember, this is in the previous budget, this is where a lot of the salaries for negotiations were, so that's why you're seeing a lot of negatives here. So, so the, the PRS rates remain flat, but we're able to reduce money out of that due to not having that money there for negotiations. The TRS rate went from, I think, ten point six two to eight point?
Six two, eight point eight six.
Yeah, so it was a very significant decrease. I'm going to take a look at this one, might be a little too high, so I'm going to go back and look at that. Social Security, once again, it's really just reducing the amount that was in there for, for negotiations. The next one down, Workers' Comp. This is one of our good success stories. Three years ago, the, this is the Dutchess County Schools Cooperative, which is all the school districts in Dutchess County except for Wapengers. Three, four years ago, we were ten million dollars in the hole. Last year, we were two million dollars to the good, and now we're four million dollars to the good. So we were able to reduce that by twelve thousand dollars, so, and we should see this for the next couple of years, hopefully. We're, we seem to be in a really pretty good place with Workers' Comp. And I think it's a lot of reasons, as far as better safety training and things of that nature, to be a part of it, but, and also the big thing about last year, there was not a lot of ice and snow. So that may change this year, so, I'll have to wait till the next meeting of that to see all the trips and falls and the ice. The other big area is health insurance. I have to relook at this section completely again. I don't expect it to go any higher than what it is there, I'm hoping to go a little bit downward, but at this moment, we're still finishing up just recently with the ANI negotiations and depending where everybody falls. We're going to see a different number there with the, with the second draft. That information we just got, so. Was able to reduce the union welfare benefits a little bit too, which was nice. And now let's get to the last page, because there's two items here, actually a couple items here that I want to discuss here. Under debt service, the first section, the last line, it says interest serial bonds, twelve point zero one eight project, and we see that it's gone from two hundred thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand, which is an increase of two hundred and fifty thousand. This is for our project, this was our three-year phase in, so that when we get to the bonds, it's already there. It's in place, this isn't going to be a one-year hit of all of a sudden bam. This will also be able to reduce our principals, so we'll be able to go out with a lower cost, so that would be helpful too. Kind of help offset that, if we look right below, and I mentioned a little bit earlier, installment purchase, EPC from two thousand and one, it's gone. We subtract about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the budget from there, and about another four thousand dollars for interest. So that EPC is done, and we got six more years for this last one, which was with the big project from two thousand and seven. And then as we go to inter-fund revenue, inter-fund transfers, I added a line for transfers to school lunch fund for fifteen thousand dollars. Typically are doing that anyways, but this time we're budgeting for it.
Yeah.
So, so this is a three point two percent budget to budget increase, a little over a million dollars. So let's talk and let's go to the next part. Any questions on the other side of the table?
Tom, can I just ask a quick question about the boiler? If we had to replace that, what's the cost and is there a way to kind of put a fund together to start replacing some of that money?
I don't know, I don't know what the cost, but I can definitely get this on our radar to. I'll talk to Sheldon about that.
Tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands?
I don't know. It's a couple hundred thousand.
Probably start with. Is there a way to budget for putting money, like a sinking fund?
You can, yeah. Yeah, you, you can set money aside for things like that. You put them into a fund for, for what are called repairs. And reserve for repairs, so there's a little, the only thing I don't like about that one, reserve for repairs, and let's say you put money in there, and then you decide to use it, you gotta put the money back in there.
Yeah.
Right away. Yeah, and that's the part that I don't like about using something like that, having, you're doing it for a specific purpose, bam. Let's say it's two hundred thousand, if that's the case. Let's say it's two hundred thousand, and it's like, okay, we need to use it, here it is, great, there, and we took ten years, and we got, it's over ten years, we did twenty thousand, there we go. But I have to replace it within one year. And that's the part that is really, I don't like about that, because I wouldn't want, would I want to build it back up twenty thousand dollars a year for ten years? Yeah, I'll do that, but to say I have to do two hundred thousand in one year, no.
That's only if you don't use it for a repair though.
Right, correct. I mean, that, you can specifically put it into some categories, you can only use for those purposes, and that's what happened to some people, they get into a certain category, they can't get it out of there. And that's one of the, one of the hard things, so. So the first thing I want to look is the tax levy limit first, because this will play into the whole revenue side.
Thank you, I don't want to.
Is that in, under the boiler?
Okay, I'll, I'll.
No, it should, it should have came to you in your, in your packet. I didn't get it. Two weeks ago, you did get it. Yours is in. We made sure yours.
That's what I'm asking.
Is it dated February thirteenth?
Yes, two thousand and eighteen, yes.
It's in my binder, it's in the rollover.
I got it, I got it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, well, that's good. Throw it in there.
Uh-huh.
All right, so how we do this is we start at the prior year tax levy. We add our tax-based growth factor, which was point eight nine, that's fantastic. That means the value of new property built or run back is almost one percent of the total assessments. That's fantastic. So that point eight nine is great, you add in the pilots, you're going to subtract the pilots later, but really it's the point eight nine percent, and our CPI is two percent, okay? So on this one page, you're going to see a fairly big number, one point two million dollars, as you see a subtract. If we roll the page over to the next one, you see that's increased to three point eight one. And that is accounting for, and that's the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we added to it. We have the subtraction of the building aid that came off for the EPC, but we have the additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming on, so that kind of nets it out, and that's how we get to a three point four percent tax levy increase. So it's basically looking at two point eight nine percent from the cap and the tax growth plus the, the net effect of our debt service. So that's where we get up to three point four percent for our taxes. And, and that could change a little bit between now, but that's pretty much going to be in the range of where we should be. So now if we go.
I'm sorry, Tom, my tax levy increase is two point eight.
That's what mine says too.
You got last year's.
That's last year's. Yeah, that's last year's. I'm not sharing.
Well, yours also says twenty eighteen.
Yes, the original one does say, this one does, this one.
We'll take your word.
Did not take, it still says February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I have an extra one here, does someone like an extra item? There you go.
Thank you.
Yes, 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 not, not bad.
You're just going to do a.
And what do you know?
Yep, sorry about that.
Does that hold true for?
No, it shouldn't hold true for anything else, that should be the only thing. If we take a look at the revenue side, we see that the taxes are three point eight four, slightly above. Let's talk about some of the things that we've done and changed on this side. We've got a little bit more pilot money, but what I have done here is I added seventy thousand dollars to interest and earnings. We are earning interest now, Christine's doing a great job with investing that monies, so we're, we're easily going to make that hundred thousand dollars, which is, is good to see. And as tax rates, or tax rates, interest rates go up, it's just going to mean that we are able to generate more income. I did increase insurance recoveries, we just haven't been beating twenty-five thousand, so.
It decreased, it decreased, yeah, by five.
Miscellaneous stays the same, it really is all around the refund of BOSI's aided services, and you really don't know until the years over what it is. We go on to the next page, we see we have state aid, we have a twelve thousand dollar increase, and basically, there's two things that factor here, is that there is a decrease to our building aid, because we have an EPC come off, and we've also lost some monies when it comes to textbooks, software, and library loan, because we have shrinking enrollment. The rates have not changed, so every year that number's going to just go smaller and smaller and smaller. Our BOSI's aid is down too, we're doing less services with them, so we're not generating, so you do less work with BOSIs, you generate less aid, so. I don't want to spend, I don't want to spend twenty thousand dollars just to get ten thousand dollars back the next year, it's just not, it's just.
So how come we're up twelve, four, four eight?
Because we had increases to transportation aid, there's a slight increase to foundation aid, and there were some other aids in there that did go up slightly, but nothing tremendous coming out of it. It's like, what, you know, there's, and then in the other section at the very bottom, the appropriate fund balance, we reduced it from an additional hundred thousand dollars, and I think I need to get one more year of this to get down where I think it's comfortable to about seven fifty. So what we have down here at the bottom, we have a, a revenue shortfall right now of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which is really, there's one thing I need to add in, which was about two grand, so let's just call it kind of even about a hundred and thirty thousand at this time, is, is the delta. There's a couple ways of being able to skin that cat a little bit, and that would be to, there's a couple of areas that really have to be looked at still, and that's being the health insurance, make sure, you know, there is some savings there, how much, it has to be determined. Special education, and the, as, as Ms. Davidson goes through each of the CSEs, she updates me, especially if it's an outside placement, I think, you know, if they're in, they can handle within the school district, I think, you know, that's why. Anytime she knows it's going to add some money, she does contact me. Some other areas of potential savings.
Health insurance, right?
The health insurance, and OCHED. I don't know how many kids are going next year, couldn't tell you at this moment. Well, I have it the same as what we had the previous year, and whether it's up or lower is hard to say, you know, because as, as much as enrollment is declining, it's not really declining quite yet up at the high school level. We're going to start to see some slight declines up there, and it's, in two years is, is really when you're going to get three sections hitting the middle school, and not next year, but the year after. We have one big class, so if, one last thing, if you go under here, there's enrollment, which is, should be about the last, and right here, one of the things I tried to do this year is I color coded it, so you could follow it along, so you can see the enrollment trends. And I, I pointed one out earlier this year, and it's like, okay, so let's take that yellow line, came in with seventy-one kids, and if you follow that yellow line down, all right, increase, decrease, decrease, increase, increase, increase. Then again, we started with seventy-one, and we're looking, you know, a couple of years out, they have seventy-two in that class. Now let's go one more over, let's go to the blue line, sixty-two. Now let's go all the way to the bottom, we're looking at eighty-four. So that's really, and as you go to the next one, it started at sixty-nine, and we're projecting to stop eighty-eight. So as you can see, every grade, every incoming grade level is just, you don't know what's going to happen, you really don't, so, but as you, as you take a look at it though, those in, in, when you get to twenty-one, twenty-two, that's where we're going to start seeing the three sections hitting the middle school. We're, they're at seventy. It's a determination whether you want to make it three sections or keeping it four, but that's, that's a couple of years down the road. So I just wanted to let you know that was there, and I hope that's a little bit more helpful. I've tried to color code the other ones too for the future, so it's easier to follow along, I found it much easier to follow along than.
Tom, with all the retirees, the ones that were replacing, are they in this budget? And what number?
No, retirees were all taken out.
Right, but the, the people we're going to hire to replace the.
The replacement, the replacement lies in the mall, they're in here.
What do we assume as a salary?
Masters, step four, family health insurance, which is what we've been budgeting for years.
That's what's budgeting.
Yep.
Seems to be pretty, pretty.
And it kind of varies, it depends upon the position. Give you an example, it's sometimes, some positions, you know, when you're trying to find the right person, you know, sometimes you got to give an example, layer guidance council. That definitely came in higher than what I budgeted. It happens, but then there's sometimes we're hiring somebody right out of college and we're getting them step one, but then there's sometimes there's a step ten, so with eight retirements here, there's probably some will be over step four, or some are going to be under step four, it's just, it's going to be a matter of, until that hiring process happens, but we really don't put any limitations in the hiring process to hire the, who you think is the most qualified for this job. We don't say, oop, you know, we don't make any determinations, say, oh, no, we're, we're step one, only get people out of high school, or not high school.
At college.
But I know, I know some schools are like that, I know some schools are like that, they want to, I don't want cheaper to get high school kids to take over as teachers, but.
But you're in South Carolina, they can't find enough.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay, so let's, let's just get to the bottom line here, so my read on this is, this preliminary first draft budget shows a difference of a hundred twenty-eight, seven, seven, five between the tax levy limit and where we're at now, as opposed to like, you know.
Correct.
And you've mentioned at least six or seven things during the presentation tonight, that the numbers aren't firmed up, and you anticipate, well, I could take twenty thousand dollars out of this, I could take thirty thousand dollars out of it, so this is at least the striking distance.
Yeah.
And that'll play out over the course of the next several weeks.
But we can start.
You know what our retirees are, that's, that's a nutshell, that's already built into this. There's some questions like, we still have to finish calculations on health insurance, so maybe some savings there, so.
We can start putting a small list of potential cuts together, just in case we don't get, you know, a hundred twenty thousand dollars in savings, but, and to me, it's a matter of material supplies and that type of thing, because based on what is added by principals and other administrators, we just want to cut back on there. back on their supplies and materials and those type of things, if, if, if we're in the case of still not get the tax cap.
Well, might also be, might also be a good idea to put a list of the, the items that you called out tonight, going through this, that are potential movers.
Right.
Yes. And then we'll just track them.
Yep. When would you want to develop a list of potential cuts? I mean, for when?
Well, I'm basically going to go back to last year's and really just start looking at, be, just really looking at supplies, materials, that type of thing.
No, 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 no. I'm not talking about the substance, I'm talking about the timing. So, you know, this is our first, this is the first draft.
Yep.
And usually we get at least four drafts, right?
Yeah, but we usually.
Can start earlier. We probably won't get through four drafts this year.
All right, so let's say three drafts. So would you want to have that cut list for draft two? Would you want to have that cut list for draft three?
Well, I think that gets into a good conversation right now, because what's our next meeting?
Uh, two weeks, yeah.
No.
Oh, well, the budget is here.
The budget meeting is the work session.
Oh, right.
On that Saturday. So I don't know what we want that to look like, knowing we, you know, what do we want to do for this, this work session?
Well, the other question is, should we?
Do we still want it that day? Do we still want it that day too?
That's two weeks, less than two weeks.
Yes, less than two weeks.
Well, a number of questions came up tonight that you could be asking the building principals and the, and the administrators. We don't have, we don't, you asked a couple of questions and Tom speculated or said, I'm not, I'm not sure why you increased that $5,000 or whatever. So I mean, we can get that information from them at that, if we hold our hearing on the night.
Work session. Moving parts. Yeah, so at what point are we going to know a little better about special ed and about health insurance?
Well, I mean, we might not know till the end of March. Yep, yep. So a lot of times it hasn't happened.
When health insurance being set? Oh, that's what, that's what the people moving.
Yes, well, there's two things. There's two things. It's the people moving and the rate hasn't been set yet. And that would be at the March meeting, we'll know when that is.
And when, when is that March beginning or at the March?
Well, I think it's at the beginning because of the break. Actually, I think we, it's like the first weekend in March versus the third week in March. Because I think with the, the spring break this year, it's kind of in the middle of March.
No, it's April.
April? Yeah, I'm looking at the one month.
Yes, you are.
You're looking at 2018. Living in the past. That's not a past, I want to look to the past. So let's, let's stay in 2019.
A little.
We are meeting March 6th. I knew we were meeting early, and I don't know why.
Why were we meeting March 6th?
I don't know why D. Hick is, no. Oh, D. Hick, he's meeting March 6th.
It's getting late.
So that was 2016.
So one of the things that we talked about a little bit, I don't know if it was in committee or here, was, was not really looking at the budget from perspective of cuts, but from each principal managing their, their programs and what they want to do, and to do that, they need to do, you know, this. You know, and I think it's, it's kind of the way that it's, it's presented can have an impact on how it's perceived. Right? So I don't really want to go down another list of, of cuts if, you know, I, I think that that's kind of, you know, going down the same road again. I'd rather see the principal say, I really want to deliver this robust program, you know, this is what I'm changing, right? I, I think that is a bit better than, than saying, here's what I have to cut again. Because we've, you know, we've gone down this road. I mean, last year was certainly more impactful than this year is, but, you know, if we don't get eight retirees next year, we're going to have a bigger gap, if all things being equal. So the sooner we can change this mentality of a cut list, I think the better off we're going to be. So I would encourage the principals to think about it more so that way for this budget workshop.
And I guess that's why I'm leaning towards keeping the budget work session, I guess we're calling it that, keeping the budget work session on for March 9th, where we ask them to tell us about their programs and how their budget requests support their programs, especially, I agree with Steve, if we don't want to get into that cut list mindset, at least at this point, I mean, if we're coming down to the end of March and we still have a $30,000 gap, just off the top of my head, then we got to say, okay, where can we peel back $30,000? Which, again, is a heck of a lot less angst than peeling back a half a million dollars or whatever. And so I, I don't think we're in that same place. I'd rather keep it positive and have them talk about their budgets and what they want to spend money on, and what they want to add back into their budgets or whatever, and do that on the 9th. And we keep it positive, we keep it upbeat, we know we still have some more information that we have to collect through, early through, to at least the end of March, depending on when some, yeah, when some of this stuff can happen. And then we look at the bottom line. Hopefully by that time it's down, it's, it's out of the three-figure range where we're talking about maybe, I don't want to even guess on the number, but it's a lot easier task at that point than start coming up with a list of cuts for March 9th. I think that may be.
That's, and see if that's necessary.
Not where, where we need to go, so. And it also still gives us enough time to do stuff. If we wait until the end of March to do the budget work, work session, or excuse me, then now we're backing up against the, the drop dead date. And I'd rather do it sooner, raise issues sooner, and give them and us a few more weeks to finesse whatever has to be finessed than to wait to do that to the end. That's the only reason I'm saying sooner rather than later, but I'll do whatever you guys feel most.
That makes sense.
I think it's a good year to try it, I think.
Yeah, you know, I think it seems like a logical first step, rather than.
Yeah, and we'll try to implement a different way to go at it this year, and let's at least follow through and see if it works.
Okay.
One.
Good.
There's a couple things in here though that don't quite fit in that, you know, like modern training or that stuff, then something else maybe has to change. Now, I think there's just an increase in there, something in high school, you know, field. If that's more important than something like that, then it has to change, but even just increases.
Well, I'd rather talk about that stuff sooner than later. Why, why would we want to wait till the end of March to talk about that? I'd rather talk about it now and have them start massaging their budgets earlier than wait till the 11th. But again, that's just my thinking at this point.
Everybody want to stick with the night?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Lisa, you good with staying the night?
You ready to bet?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
And you're going to get us some updated.
Shape there.
Uh, Tom, any developments with the budget?
Yes, all right. So in front of you, I've placed three documents, they're all hole punched. Two of them I don't even want you to look at, because there's no need to, but it's for your binder. And that basically is the big document, which is 19 pages long. This is just the backup for it. And then there's one for the revenues. This, this is just for your book, because this one here, which goes through the development process to date, is the one that I want you to take a look at. All right, this is the one we typically use. And I mentioned some things over the weekend when we had our board work session, and also in finance, we talked a little bit. And so we have a few changes here that I want to talk about, and there's still a couple of questions that are up in the air yet still. So I, I did talk about, in the finance committee, not particularly at the work session, but it was one thing that I noticed as I was going through things, is that I found an expenditure that was on our special education side and remembered that the child that was there was actually a foster child. So that cost is going to be borne by their home district. So I put the corresponding revenue against it that we would collect from, from the school district in question. So I was able to add $50,000 to the, to the budget, or to the revenue side of the budget, which helps reduce the tax levy. But I've also had to make some additions to it. And so really the first three, the first one is BOSI services, $2,000. That's for super intended evaluation software. It's something the bill just came in, and just, geez, that's not in the budget, so I added it to it. In the next line, other expenses, an increase of $900 is, and this is the Laura Hudson Coalition, educational coalition, that's something we started up this year, so this is the dues. And the next one is, is a, is a software BOSI's code. And the $3,000 additional is, Steve Jensen, who is our director of technology and communications, remembered that next year we have some equipment that is coming off a warranty and that will go onto a service contract, so we wanted to get that in the budget, because some of those things pop up the next year, and it's like, oh, didn't budget for it. So luckily, Steve caught that in time and we were able to.
So the $3,000 is the cost of the service?
The cost of the service contract. I can't remember what the piece of equipment it was, off the top of my head. Now, the next two go in conjunction with the one on the bottom, being a deletion. So in our original budget, I had put $10,240, which was the amount of money that we were to raise to do the first of three years of expenditures to BOSI's for the capital project.
Hundred, 200,000?
Yeah, 100,240, whatever they say.
10.
Oh, 100,240, sorry. A little different number. So in speaking with our financial consultant at Bernie Donigan's office, who's actually working for the BOSI's also, when we met with him about a month ago, he talked us through it, because as I said, though, we have three years of expenditures of a million dollars, but yet we can expend this thing over 20 years, going through a serial bond, which we will do. We don't have a million dollars laying around there. A couple of school districts are banging it out of their pocket. But it also has an impact on our tax cap. So this first year for them, because this is the low, they're only paying about one tenth the first year. Next year they pay like six tenths. You're going to have a tough time next year if you plan to continue with cash, because that is going to come directly out of their tax cap. What we're planning to do here right now is to borrow money for this first year, doing a ban for the, what we need, $100,240. But in reality, we're going to be expensing this over 20 years. So we're going to be, over the years, and though the numbers will change a little bit, we're going to be paying about $71,000 a year, versus next year 100, the following year like 600,000, and then 300,000. So we have those numbers are in there, so it, it, it really escalates. And so some school districts are able just to use the money they have on hand, as opposed to going out and borrowing the money and doing it that way. Could we do it for the first year? Yeah, we could, but not for the second year. We don't have $600,000 just to say, let's just put it in our budget and pay it. So this is actually going to show the true reflection of the cost, because it will become a future liability. So even though we're going to pay $100,000 out, we're only going to expense about 70,000 and $30,000 difference is just going to be a liability for the future. So this actually frees up about $30,000 for, for our use in the budget. So if we flip the page over, we'll give you kind of an update. So the net effect of this is, we save $50,000, it's not showing here, $50,000, but we're showing a reduction of expenditures of $22,600, which gives us a new total that's slightly under 35 million, or 3.13%, which drives a current tax levy of 3.59. We are capped at 3.4% as our tax cap. So right now, we are over the tax levy limit right now, just over $56,000. There's still some work that needs to be done, with some of it I'll talk to you in an executive session about, in regards to recently and future negotiations. And also, we've gotten new health insurance information, but that has not been put through the wringer yet to figure out how much of reduction that is. Or in addition, I don't know yet. I'm feeling it's a reduction until all the numbers play out. So that's where we're left at this time. We have a delta a little over 56,000. Some other numbers I have to get yet, and one that I've mentioned tonight is CTI. At this time, we don't know how many kids are going to CTI. I have 25 budgeted, we have 19 there. But that's not to say we don't know who these, the current sophomores, who would be juniors, how many of them are going to select that program, then how many current juniors are going to continue with the program. You don't have to, most of them do, but it's not always a requirement, so.
Will we know that before the budget gets finalized?
Before the budget gets finalized. Like you said, they're in the process right now, the guidance of putting in schedules and finding out what each of the students would like to do. So within a couple of weeks, we'll have a number. In fact, I'll probably have a preliminary number, probably in another week or so, just based on, you know, what's come so far and where they think it's going. And I would think over the years, that number will tend to start shrinking a little bit, just because of enrollment going down. But those classes have not gotten up to the high school. So I'd expect about 20 to 25 for the next couple of years, but then start to see that lower. Unless they come up with new exciting programs with, with the construction project, I mean, we haven't heard of them doing any new programs as to, I know everybody liked aeronautical, that type of a thing. But so far, they haven't mentioned anything like that, but they could come up with something new and exciting that could drive some kids to it. I know when you come out with new programs, it tends to keep people's interest on, into, to try it. Any questions in regards to, Mike, very brief update?
Lisa? Um, so I, I think you buried the lead, Tom. You, on the first draft, you were showing revenue shortfall above the tax levy limit of 128.775, and now you're showing it at 56.175. So that's a considerable reduction.
Going in the right direction. We've still got a little bit of work to do, and I think we can accomplish it without making any particular cuts to the budget. I'm hoping we're able to get lower than what the tax cap is, so that we consider, consider items that maybe we might want to bring into the budget. But can't really have those serious discussions until we know we're under it yet.
Understood, but it's important for us to know that we are moving in the right.
We're in the, moving in the right direction, yes. And hopefully, maybe we get a state aid update in the meantime. I don't know, I wouldn't expect a lot, but I'll take $5,000 if it helps.
Sure, sure.
Dr. Smith? For anybody who might be watching at home, can you give a very short explanation of why the tax levy limit is 3.4 and not the magic number of 2%?
Okay, yeah, yeah. And it gets into, I know a lot of people know the 2% cap and things of that nature, but that is not the reality of it. Unfortunately, it's got that tag too. So there are three parts to, there's multiple parts, but there's three main parts to your tax cap calculation. The first one is what is the CPI? In this case, this year, it's at over 2%, when it's capped at 2. So even if the number come in at 5, CPI number, consumer price indicator at 5, it's capped at 2. It's also got a floor of 0, because a couple of years ago, we actually had a negative number, but they allowed us to keep it at 0. So that's number one, CPI is the biggest factor of it all. Second one is what is the growth factor in this school district? This year it's 0.89. It's almost a 1% increase in the value of your community. So they're able to absorb an extra 1%. So if your, if your levy goes up 1%, that means everybody else is paying 1% less. So if you went out with a 0% increase, it'd be basically a 0.89% decrease that everybody, because, because the new program, the new properties picked up. Don't worry about it.
It's pretty sad about this thing.
So, and that's been one of the biggest factors in the school districts from, since the start of this, is we've actually had a pretty nice growth factor over the number of years. So you're very lucky as a community here that you are seeing growth in your community, because that is actually gone towards, you know, improving your programs. There are other school districts across this, across the county have seen very little. There are other school districts across this, across the county have seen very little. There's some that have only seen a 1% increase upon all eight years so far of it. Ours is probably up in the neighborhoods of about 6% over the eight years. So we're about 0.7% typically is our increase on the tax, on the roll side. The third major component is your capital expenditures, okay? So what you do is you take your debt service for capital and capital projects and you subtract out your state aid. That is what is required of your taxpayers to pay that amount because they have authorized that through voting, okay? And that can change from year to year. As your state aid goes up or down, that will change everything. So what's occurred with our school district here is actually our billing aid has gone down because our debt service has gone down a little. We had a little bit of a debt service cost. We had an energy performance contract that went off the books. So less debt service, less state aid. But we're in the process now of ramping up towards getting to our full capital project, what we think the total expenditures will be when we go out to bond. Last year, we added 200,000. This year, we're adding 250,000. Ultimately, we need to get somewhere between 700,000, 750,000, and next year would be that third and last year, the phase in. So that additional $250,000, because it's been voter approved, has automatically been able to add to your tax cap. There's no offset against it because we don't have aid coming in, but in the future, that will have a big factor on that. Because we've taken this money in so far, we don't have to go out and borrow all $12 million. We could go borrow $11.5 million, so we reduce our interest over the life of it. But that's a choice we have a little bit further down the road. Is the money we're collecting now, that 200, that 250, that is put aside, and then we can use those money to reduce the amount of what we go out to borrow, if we want to. We don't have to, but it can be used for that purpose. So that is the big factors. That's how we get to 3.4. Almost 2.89 just because of CPI and growth, but then that other part of about a half a percent is with the additional $250,000 for the upcoming capital project.
Thank you.
All right. If you don't understand it, please, by all means, give me a call.
I'm good. And I also.
Because I can sit down with numbers.
You probably did that in the meeting that I missed, didn't you?
No, now we.
It is important.
Yep, it's important to know that.
All right. Any other budget question? Joe.
Not so much a question, but I did mention at our budget work session on Saturday morning that because Steve Boucher, our athletic director, was not able to be there due to another commitment to sectional athletics, I did ask him to come this evening just to be able to tell us a little bit about the interclassical athletic budget and answer any questions that you guys might have had Saturday that you haven't gotten answered. So he is here with us. And Steve, maybe give us a quick overview of your budget and then whatever questions there might be.
There are, I hope you have it or had it or can get it.
Well, if you go to your big document that you just got today, you would go to page number 17, page 17, starting at the top.
There are very little changes to the overall athletic budget. Pretty much the major changes are in the 400 account. And that's, we're looking to add Huddle, which is the video sharing software that we use currently with basketball, and we split the cost with football and with Pine Plains, adding it for our other sports. And what Huddle allows, one, the coaches to do is it allows the coaches to have scout sharing tapes. They can use other schools and they can send tapes back and forth. But it's also nice for coaches to take and break the tape down and then show the kids what they need to work on, what they did well. What's also really nice about it is this program called Huddle Assist, which we started with basketball a couple of years ago. They actually, Huddle breaks the tape down. So you can go on and you can say, you know, Joe, I want to see all of Joe's points. And you can click on Joe and hit those points, and they'll take you to all of the videos. So what that then allows kids to do is it allows kids to create their own highlight videos. So kids will create highlight videos. If you look on my son Traxx's high school athletics, various different kids have their Huddle name on their Twitter accounts so that colleges know where to go and look and they can just see, you know. But it's also a nice thing, the majority of our kids aren't going to probably go out and become, you know, Division One collegiate athletics, but they do have the ability to create their own highlight to have with them so they can remember, you know, back in the day.
But he could run.
So that's really the significant change. We have built in there all the various different contractual costs that, you know, just continue to, as they go.
Well, one thing to bring up in that there, part of that increase there is also for, as we talked about, I don't remember what committee we talked about, was the trainer. The athletic trainer is an additional cost this year. I can't remember where we discussed it, but I remember at some point that was discussed. So there's that in there. And also, the cost of Pine Plains football continues to grow a little bit. Not tremendously, but there's cost to it, and that increases every year, so.
So that's all in the $15,000?
Yes, yes, yep, yep.
Increase? And is the football increase salary driven or?
Well, salary, yeah, because transportation.
Transportation is separate. But yeah, it's not humongous. It's about $1,000, but, and in the BOSI services, you see an increase of $5,000. And that is for family ID that we use for many different things, but it never had gotten budgeted before. And actually, we've expanded family ID to not just be athletic, but just be across the board.
We're hopeful that, I'm trying to convince, that we're going to bring that onboard for all of our middle school and high school so that that duplication of filling out paperwork can be minimized.
Greatly minimized.
Love that program.
In addition, there's also an increase for referees, number two. Referees get paid out of BOSI's. It's a service that they provide to us, so they, all referees are paid out of, was it Orange BOSI?
Orange Ulster BOSI.
Orange Ulster BOSI's. But then we're backbuilt all those, that refereeing cost.
Mark.
Could you just speak to combined sports? I know we, football was mentioned a couple of minutes ago, but proposals for other sports combining and if there's any update on those? So I have spoken with Pine Plains. Pine Plains actually reached out to me concerning field hockey because they had discussed potentially merging last year, that our kids wanted to stay here. We had 13 seniors. So this year, two juniors. They have expressed, the kids have expressed an interest in wanting to continue to play field hockey, and obviously, to not make a team. Pine Plains has said, you know, we're still interested and we'd be interested not only in varsity, we'd also be interested if you have anybody else. They run a modified aid program, 789. So if we had kids that were interested, they would be able to play also. In terms of cost, that's something that Joe and Superintendent Pine Plains, Barney Handler, are currently discussing. I know that we're currently running a bus every day, so, you know, that would increase, it would actually kind of lower the per student cost in terms of transportation. I'm not, I don't know whether or not we would be able to generate enough interest at the modified level to eventually build our program back, especially when we look at the numbers of our students that are going down and the amount of sports that are interested in the fall. But at least we give our kids an opportunity to be exposed to fill out. The only other one that we had discussed was swimming. Redhook is still, not sure whether or not they're going to have swimming. In addition, we had a section meeting today, and there are those section rules that would have to change. And I did propose that the combined teams committee at least look at that and, you know, see whether or not that number of seven for swimming is a good number or not. I did also suggest, and the executive director from the New York State Public High School was there, that possibly maybe we should look at the rebalancing of sports. So rather than have 50% of all of the girls' sports for the girls offered in the fall, spread it out so that we could, you know, have more student involvement in the winter season. We'll see. That's, I think, a very heavy lift across the state, but, you know, at least the conversation started.
There might be more of a chance to get the number.
Yeah.
Moved than it would be to switch the sports. But we brought, Steve brought up both as options and especially with the idea of looking at the numbers for combining, there was at least agreement that they'd look at. And this isn't going to happen overnight. And, you know, the other thing, as Steve already mentioned, Redhook hasn't made any kind of commitment to do anything at this point. So regardless of what Redhook does, we'll keep working it from the section side and, you know, we'll keep you posted.
The Pine Plains merger with field hockey, is there an interest of younger kids to play? Is there an option to kind of just get the two seniors next year through so they can play their varsity?
I know that there are a few kids that have been doing an actual program over at Chancellor. I'm not sure, you know, whether or not they will pick up and want to play field hockey or whether they're going to continue to have soccer or, you know. I did have two ninth graders go up to me and ask, when are you signing up for field hockey? I was like, well, there's two of you, so we're going to need like, you know, nine more, 12 more. So, you know, I think that they may be interested in going to Pine Plains in May.
When are they supposed to let you know about?
Well, signups for fall sports don't start until one month prior to the season. And as of right now, we're starting on August 19th, so that would be July 19th is when we start the signups. As we get towards the end of May, I will have a meeting for all students interested in playing field hockey, get the Pine Plains coach to come over so that they can start. I do know that one of our students has been playing in, apparently, with Pine Plains. That would do.
It's probably more Joe-Tom question, but I know with football, the financial arrangement of mergers could be different. I know one time we did like a per student cost, then sometimes it's just split. Is that the same with all mergers? Because, no, typically.
Goes according to the school district.
So whatever you want to, whatever the two of you agree with.
Yeah, and our agreement with Pine Plains for football has been since football, given the numbers of athletes, typically, there are two coaches for football. So we pay for one, they pay for the other. We take care of the transportation of our kids. They take care of the transportation to game, you know, game transportation. So it seems like a, you know, pretty reasonable way to share. You'll recall in previous years when we had an arrangement with several other school districts over the years, they were charging us a per student cost, which I'll just say, I think splitting the costs like we have been with Pine Plains is been more equitable for both schools. They're not making any money from us. We're sharing the cost, and I think that's the way school districts ought to be dealing with one another, is sharing the cost. So I do have a call into Dr. Handler over at Pine Plains, asking him, so if we did merge with you, with Pine Plains for field hockey, what kind of arrangement would you want to talk about? And he's, at least so far, been pretty reasonable about not looking to make money off a merger. But we'll see. I don't want to speak for him, but if it's anything like football, I'm guessing he may say, well, let's split the cost of the coach with us, and I think that would be reasonable.
And when do you think we get an idea of the cost of what a merged field ID program would be?
I was expecting him to call me this week, but he hasn't gotten back to me yet. But I imagine before our next meeting. I mean, if he doesn't get back to me within the next couple of days, I'll call him. Yank his chain, I'll bet.
Thank you. Jacqueline.
So I can't remember from last year, but can you tell us about what other fundraising might happen or what other costs that students bear or parents bear or are there, you know, is there anything?
There are.
Well, speak to a new sport, Steve.
So for a new sport, so if we wanted to start a sport, the last, the last time we added sports, which I think, if I remember correctly, was seven years ago, I think. For some reason, I have that number seven standing out in my head. The board said, okay, as long as it came out at zero cost in the district, which, that's tough for new sports to start because you're looking at booster clubs to be able to fundraise the money for anybody within our student population that wants to be part of that sport. So that's where we were. You know, in terms of adding new sports, I don't, I don't know how we could add new sports without raising the budget, without doing it that way at this moment. Does that?
Yeah, but for existing sports, do we have any?
Other than like shoes?
Right, yeah.
Personal.
Yeah, other than personal stuff, right?
A glove?
Right.
No, there are, no. You know, they want to buy their own clothes, you know. Our coaches will set up the online store so that they can get all the very sort of swag.
It's not uniforms, though.
Right, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve, for your time. Appreciate it.
Do the rest of you need?
You bet.